Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 22nd, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. Could all please stand for the pledge? Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic. One nation.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So like to wish Rob a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Rob.
Happy birthday, Mr. Garrett.
All right, so as we get into the meeting, first we have correspondence. Anything we want to discuss there? John, anything we need to go over?
That's up to you. Nope. We can discuss. Nothing from our standpoint.
Okay. All right. Now, we got, if I could just ask, because I didn't see the town board meeting. The town board, Ed has gotten, I guess, they went and did their own, some traffic studies. At certain areas, I saw Hemlock.
The only traffic studies that we did were for some of the signs that were going down. I think, John, correct me if I'm not mistaken. You might be, you might be thinking about the fact that we're going to go for an RFP for a traffic consultant?
Oh, is that what it's going on? All right, that's great news.
John, and there were no other traffic studies that I'm missing that we initiated, correct?
No, but you, you did have a discussion on Halix Mill with Phil Greeley. Maybe, maybe he's thinking about that.
Yeah, I saw that on the agenda. All right, that's what it was.
Yeah, Halix Mill's been an issue that I know that the Safety Board and Committee has been looking at since, I think, before I've even been on the board. Which I'm in my sixth year now, so it's been a while on that.
Okay. Um, any further development on putting the work sessions on TV? Or is that still?
It was, it was brought up. I don't, we haven't really gotten into the, into the meat of it. I think that, you know, part of the issue is just going to be finding the funds right now, because it was brought up. There's additional expense, you know, just even from hiring Tom to come in and do it, so.
Okay. All right, then, we'll move on to the meeting minutes of February 8th, 2021. Has everybody had the chance to review the meeting minutes?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Any issues?
None here. None.
No.
Excellent. All right, that being said, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 8th, 2021?
Motion. Second.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
It was first by LaScala, second by Bach, all in favor. All right, now do I have a motion to move into a special session?
So moved.
Second, second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, it was first by Kincart, second by Garrigan. All right, first on the agenda, we have the Fusco Minor Subdivision. This is a request for a second 90-day time extension of a reapproval. Dan here?
Good evening.
Hey, Dan.
Hey, Dave.
Hopefully, this is the last one. We were in contact with the Health Department. They're ready to sign off on it, and the last piece we need is this reapproval. They just want to make sure our approval is current, so we should have their approval shortly, and I'll finish up meeting all the conditions of the resolution.
Okay, John, anything on your end?
Nothing on our end.
Is Jim here tonight or no?
Not yet.
Not yet.
All right, any questions or comments from the board?
None.
None.
All right, there's no issues. I have a motion to approve the request for a second 90-day time extension of reapproval for the Fusco Minor Subdivision.
Done.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It was first by Kincart, second by Bach, all's in favor. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, next, we are back on the agenda, New York Self-Storage in the Jefferson Valley. This is amendment to the approved site plan. Location 621 Bank Road, Jefferson Valley. How are you doing?
Fine, thank you. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. So, since we were at the last meeting, nothing's changed on the site plans. We're just here to discuss approval resolution and see if you have any other questions.
Have you had a chance to review the resolution?
Yes, we have.
Are there any issues?
No. No issues.
Not anything on our end?
Nothing on our end.
Any comments or questions from the board?
None here. No.
Aaron? Everybody's good?
Yep.
All right, then, do I have a motion for the resolution approving an amended site plan, special use permit, wetland permit, and stormwater pollution prevention plan for New York Self-Storage in the Jefferson Valley amended site plan?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It was first by Bach, second by LaScala, all in favor, none opposed?
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you all. Yeah, thank you all very much.
Okay, John.
Welcome, good luck.
Thank you. Take care.
Take care. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Stammer Subdivision Lot 2. This is a public hearing for amended site plan and special use permit for large-scale solar system. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It was first by LaScala, second by Kincart, all's in, all are in favor and none opposed. You have the applicant here?
Yes, Peter Scott is here.
How are you, sir?
Very good, thank you.
Okay, you're on.
So basically, we're applying for a major solar generator because of the size of the house. We have a 5,000-square-foot roof system. We're using a Tesla roof system. We're generating 25 kilowatt-hours of power. We exceed the 20 KW limit, and the reason why we have the power creation is just based upon efficiency of our, of our system. And accordingly, we requesting this because we need the energy to power a bunch of ballpark units which we provided in a description to you. We're powering up a couple, actually up to four Tesla cars. And we need the, we need that much power to keep the whole system running. And our roof shingles look just like regular shingles. We've sent you some pictures of that in my package. And we, I could show you elevations of the building. But basically, it would look just like a normal house. It just, it's generating power versus passive shingles, they're active. And we have extensive setbacks. We're in a four-acre parcel of land. So we have plenty of setbacks, and the neighbors, if they viewed the site, would just see the, the roof shingles itself.
If I, Mr. Scott, if you could share your screen with us, maybe show us some of that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Shared the wrong one. So basically, this is a site plan of the project. And as you can see, we have extensive buffers in all directions. To the west of this map, which is down on the map itself. We own adjacent lot, lot number three. To the right or the south. Again, open land. And to the north toward Jerome Road. We're keeping an extensive buffer in this area. We're putting additional trees so they can't see the roof. In terms of what the building looks like. This is a picture of the elevations of the building itself. On this are the superimposed, the description of the, of the roof system itself. And it was, it looks just like, the Tesla roof looks just like a normal roof. This particular house has low pitches or they're at a 512 pitch. And so we minimize the visual vertical footprint of the building itself. And we, in doing so, we kept the profile low. And also, we built the building into the hillside so that we're following the terrain of the property. We're not sticking up very high in the air. And everything is built into the ground, as you can see. A garage is built into the ground. The house is flush with grade in the back. So it's a big one-story building, basically, with everything else built into the ground. So in terms of the power supply system itself, the only thing that's visible on the exterior of the building would be Tesla battery packs. And the Tesla battery packs are located along the east side of the building, along the rear. And there's also another battery pack inside a little courtyard, which is pretty much hidden from view from all sides. We've done our best to sort of minimize, again, exposure to the building and the view shed. So we can work out all the details with the necessary Tesla battery system. And that's pretty much it.
So have you been in front of any other boards?
We, we went to ARB and the Architect's Review Board, and they approved the, the architecture of the project, including the roof shingles. And that's the only board we have to appear before. We've also submitted everything to the town engineer, and he's reviewed our SWIP and our drainage. We have an approval from the Westwood County Health Department for the, for the septic system. And so everything is approved at this point in time.
There's no variance? Is there anything required for the property?
The only variance we need is we're applying for a home office. That home office, we're appearing on the ZBA on Thursday. And the home office is in this area here, above the garage. I can kick to that. And the home office is right here, over the top of the garage array. And the variance is because we need a variance for having a home office per the zoning.
Okay, do you want to talk about that a little bit more?
Sure, so the, let's see, the floor plan here. Here with me, okay. So basically, the, the building is a total of 6,500 square feet. Approximately 1,200 of that is the, is the home office over the top of the, of the, of the garage itself. We anticipate the use of the site by the owner. We provided parking spots in a, in a large courtyard in front of the building itself. So we have four garage spaces, one of which will be the owner. And he'll have one assistant and a periodic representative from Tesla will visit the site. And so that, those, they are working here. About five times a month at max, we would have people coming to look at this house itself. It's a prototype Tesla house that uses all the bells and whistles that Tesla has, including the roof system, the heating system. We also have specialty glass, which is being produced in conjunction with Tesla. And so we're showing a total package for review for utilizing this overall system in other facilities in the metropolitan New York area. We picked this site because, A, it slopes to the west. It's large enough, it's 4.05 acres, which with an additional two acres beyond that. It's easily accessible from various highways, but it's remote enough that it will, it's pretty much standalone, but buffer in all directions with the natural terrain that we have on the property. And that was why we picked the site.
So what is the total square footage of the building again?
Well, it's around 6,500, because it has a full lower level, which is finished as well. So this is all, this is all 5,040, but we have another lower level finished, which is built into the ground. And that brings a total of about 6,400.
And the office space again is how many square feet?
Approximately 1,200.
And, you know, generally, you think of a, a home office, it's, you know, sometimes there are attorneys or accountants, maybe a dentist. This is a little bit different. So what are they exactly going to be doing?
Well.
Going to be showing the house?
What, what, my client basically works with Tesla, developing future house sites throughout the metropolitan area. And he is working on the, he works on the finance side with the product line. And basically, he will work mostly away from the property itself or periodically in this home office. And then about five times a month at max, you'd have people coming to look at this overall system as it sits on the property itself. And it's a technology review only. It's like a, I say when you do a subdivision, it's like a model house typically.
So when you say people are going to come to the house a few times a month, five times a month, how many people are you looking at showing up at one time?
Two to three people maximum.
And these are going to be people that are interested in the Tesla product?
Yes, in the, in the, in the house energy package, correct.
So this is a total system is what you're producing here?
That's correct, yes.
So this is, as you said, a model house in a subdivision. This is a model like for the area. So this is something, is this unique? Has, have there been any other houses like this built in Westchester?
No, this is it. This is the first one, which has all the bells and whistles. There's other elements have been introduced. Like there's batteries being sold locally. They have like one or two roofs installed. But this is basically the, the entire package engineered as a smart house. So everything's interconnected, everything's self-regulating. It automatically monitors the energy demands from the house, energy produced. It can kick energy to the grid, or it can charge the Tesla vehicles. And this is kind of like what the products will be in the future, because they don't want to sell intermediate components anymore. They want to sell packages. Packages are where the future of the Tesla product line is.
So in your estimation, this is, would be the future of a green house?
That's correct.
Is this a lead type of house?
Well, it would qualify in terms of the energy development. 90% of our needs are being provided by the roof system. But in terms of getting it lead qualified, I haven't pursued any of that, any of that at this point in time.
Okay, but needless to say, this sounds like it would be one of the greenest houses in the county of Westchester.
Yes, it would be, yes.
Okay.
And, and they hope there's more.
Any questions from the board?
I, I have a question. It's, it's easy to become very impressed by the technological aspects of this project and all of the things that it's trying to accomplish. And I don't want to diminish those or take away from those, because I think those are very worthwhile aims and purposes. But nonetheless, I can't help but feel that this is really a commercial piece, a commercial use of property in a residential zone. And, and we as a planning board need to consider the impacts on the, on the neighborhood. So one thing, a couple of things come to my mind. For example, how do we know, or how do you limit, I mean, the number of customers coming in? I assume your, your objective is to maximize the exposure of this building to generate business for Tesla. And yet you're saying that you will not have that many people coming in at any one time. And what, what you're looking to do is bring people in on a very, very quiet neighborly, you know, neighborhood area with narrow roads and, and things of that sort. So I'm just wondering what the overall limitations might be, if we could put anything in there, or if that's what the zoning board can put in?
We, we, we would be willing to entertain restrictions. We're also building similar buildings in Long Island, New Jersey, Connecticut. So basically, you're not, this is the first, but we're going to add more of these to disperse out across various specific areas to meet with various clientele. Everyone has to be pre-qualified to visit the site. The undertaking is really apropos to larger house sites, larger buildings, because of the, the costs and the, and the internal networking that's required to make it all function. So it is somewhat self-limiting due to the qualification process that we follow to have people visit the site.
Also, I, I think, Aaron, you know, the owner is living in the house. So the primary use really is residential use. I mean, I've taken my son through a number of windy backroads for music lessons and, you know, saxophones probably make a lot more noise than Tesla solar charging units. And he was not the only student, and that went on there. And we have an application tonight that Mr. Greenberg is going to be representing a client. He has an office in his home in Mayipack. And I think that the traffic that's generated when people come to an office for consultations, et cetera, is certainly probably more on a daily or weekly or monthly basis for professional use. I mean, if they take a tour of the home while they're there, hooray, but you know, the fact that the owner is going to be living in the house, I think, does, does qualify it as a residential home. And the home office advertising, you know, you know, not various talents, but various products that, you know, I, I'm all for limiting the, the traffic, if that, if the applicant is open to that. But I think as far as a special use permit goes, you know, I think we had dentist office, albeit in more heavily traveled areas in town. That, you know, I have regular clients come in. Sure, there are counseling services and a number of others. We have a financial services. I remember an application coming in for, so, you know, I think. We have to.
You're right, John. I, I just want to make sure that this is an impact that's considered. And if the applicant is willing to come up with some reasonable restrictions, I think that would, would take care of it. I very much want to see this use. I think it's a great use. I think it's the wave of the future. I just want to be cognizant of the impact on the surrounding community, as is our responsibility.
And, and you know, I, I take note of your comment about the roads there. They are narrow and, you know, it's not in a quasi-commercial area. So I certainly think being sensitive to that is a good point that you're making.
Yes. What I envision at the end of this is that we should probably do a memo to the zoning board. You know, just letting our concerns be known after the hearing is completed. And go on that way.
Right.
If I may interject, yeah, so traffic is always based upon a daily use rate. So we, we'd be willing to accept some sort of daily, you know, restriction on clientele on a daily basis, if that's so desirable. Because that, that's, that reflects how traffic, the generation and traffic reports and, and the capacity analysis is pretty much established. So we'd be willing to look at something like that.
Okay, good.
John Tiger, can I ask a question, Dick? So we have a public hearing now. They're in front of the ZBA next. Procedurally, how, how does that work?
Well, this, this is for the use of the solar shingles only.
Right.
So, so you can, you can close this if you like, because I believe that what they're doing at the zoning board will then be referred back to you for the question of the use, the special permit for the use of the professional office, which will probably also need a variance, as I understand it.
Yes.
Right? So I think, I think, I think that's your question, right?
So we, right now, we have a public hearing for amended site plan and special use permit. For large-scale solar. Especially for the, what they're in front of the ZBA. We would be able to close this, send comments to the ZBA and still.
Yes, you can. Yes, you can close this, because the two don't necessarily need to go together. I don't know if Tesla will go forward if they can't get the professional office.
Right.
But certainly, you can, you can make comment to them on the professional office, and this, this end of it is, is yours.
Right.
But Rob, Robin, I think Robin thinks that you need to come up with comments tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, the ZBA referrals included.
Okay. So.
If I may, with regards to the project, we'd like to close this portion of the project because I have to remove trees before April 1st due to the countywide restriction on tree clearing due to long-eared and brown-eared bats. So, and we've got approvals from everybody else to do that. But we, we would need an approval from your board to commence taking the trees down before the end of March.
Okay, so before we go to the public, any more comments from the board?
Did he have that tree removal plan?
Yeah.
Was that, yes, Mr. Scott?
Yeah, we submitted a tree removal plan. I don't know if I have it on the screen. Problem. Let me see what I have here. I can get it on the screen. It's part of the application package. I had before simplified site plan, which is, which is easy to talk to. But I could get a, I could get possibly that plan on the screen if you needed it.
That would be helpful. See, how many trees are you taking down?
Uh, I think it's like 30 trees, part of the application. I can get that information. Let's see, bear with me here. Actually, we're taking down, I have to change that. We submitted a drawing called SY4, a tree clearing plan to your board. And the original approval of the subdivision required the removal of 144 trees in the, in the driveway, septic and, and the drainage area. And we're increasing that tree clearing to 189 total trees, which include 121 in the house and driveway, 66 in the septic area. And the drainage area, tree removal remains the same. Two are being removed where the drainage system is. So the subdivision pretty much dictated the amount of trees to be removed. And by septic area, this is the septic area here. And right here, that was 66 trees. And then the, the house site basically consisted of everywhere you see these lines of disturbance, that's where those trees are being removed, for the house and the driveway. That's 121. And then again, there's only two trees right here, one, two trees in the, in infiltration basin area. So we changed too much what was approved in the subdivision. So we changed too much what was approved in the subdivision.
Does this require the tree board or tree permit?
I think because it was part of the subdivision, uh, I, I, it was our, uh, impression that it was, um, uh, in, uh, part and parcel that, of the subdivision itself.
Well, you have to get a tree permit now, so, uh, I think that you should, we should hear from the commission.
The tree commission?
Yeah.
Do we have to hold this open?
You don't have to hold.
I don't think you have to hold it open. But I don't, uh, you know, I think you need to hear from the tree board before you approve the tree permit.
Okay.
And just so it's on the record, um, maybe the other board members have comments about this, but I have no problem with the, uh, solar roof system, you know, the solar shingles. Because we should address that specifically, right, John? We should have some comments in the record.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, John, I would be in agreement with you that for that purpose, the fact that we're having to provide a special use permit as a major, uh, generation facility or whatever, you have no issue with that as well. I do recall there was some discussion about, uh, the need for the applicant to replace a transformer that I think is nearby. Uh, it sounded like that was all being addressed and that there'd be minimal, uh, interruption to any of the local residents when they were swapping out that transformer.
Right. That's correct.
So I have objection to the solar. In fact, I, I welcome it.
Any other comments before, from the board before we do our list and go to the public? All right, Robin, anybody from the public, any questions?
Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak.
Sorry.
You got, you got the Schroders on? You got the Schroders on?
Hi, John.
Hey, John.
Hello. Good evening. Um, um, I'm free to make the comments I need to.
Yeah, I would phrase everything into questions so they get answered if you want.
Yeah, sure thing. All right. Something that just came to light, uh, I just heard was the changing of a transformer. Currently, there's a transformer fifteen feet over the top of our bedroom. Is that the one that's being changed and is it being upgraded? Um, we would certainly love to have that transformer moved.
Yes, um, we have submitted documentation, uh, to, I guess it's NICE.
No, it's Con Ed.
Con Ed, um, uh, and the, uh, the electrical, um, engineer, uh, has been, uh, putting the paper together, uh, for that upgrade. Uh, on a system like that, what they do is they check that the transformers out as part of our permit process to get, to get a connection. Uh, they, they're going to do an inspection of all the transformers, uh, that we could potentially impact prior to our connection to the grid. It's a requirement, uh, of, uh, of electrical companies.
Well, anything you could do to get that transformer moved away from our bedroom would be certainly, especially given the transformer explosion that just took place in Austin.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, this is Lynn Schroder. Um, I just wanted to make, make sure I have clarification here. Someone is going to be living in that house full-time, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And just to reiterate, uh, again, this Birdsall Drive and then Jerome Road, uh, there are six houses on Jerome Road. The, uh, in front of the proposed driveway is eleven feet. So I mean, it's wide, so it's difficult for two cars to even pass on that road. Uh, which is why we're, you know, concerned when we thought there might be dozens of people, uh, driving down here every weekend. There's no place to turn around in this road. So if someone comes down, this is your driveway. That means that turning around in my driveway or my, one of the other five, uh, neighbors on the street. So I, I think it's important, and you mentioned having, uh, you know, some type of limit on, you know, what we're talking about here, whether it's going to be, you know, ten people every weekend or two people every weekend. It makes a huge difference to the life of those other six homeowners here. Uh, so that's just something I would want to, you know, be sure that does in fact happen, that limitation.
Yeah, we're going to put a sign with it, with it, with the, uh, address, uh, at the entrance to the property. So there's no miscommunication in regards to where it's located. And we'll, we'll get a signed permit for that in compliance with the zoning.
And again, we are then going to see about getting something to, uh, for the, the limitation on the numbers of the visitors. Is that correct?
Yes.
We're going to talk about that.
It'll be daily number of people, it'll be limited to a certain number of people who would be visiting the site for the express purposes of reviewing the, uh, the property. Uh, we will have two people coming there, uh, periodically during the week that, that would be working in the home office. Uh, and also the homeowner would have, uh, vehicles, Tesla vehicles. You'll see him when he drives in and out, uh, but, uh, that, that'll be also part of the traffic generation. So we'd like to limit, if we could, the number of, of, uh, uh, potential, uh, clients, uh, visiting the site. That would be the extent of the limiting, if we could.
Okay.
All right. Is there going to be screening along the driveway as well?
Yes, I can go to the share, if I may, uh, interesting, uh, project. Good. So, uh, what's interesting is that right where my arrow is, there's an substantial, uh, growth of bamboo, which comes with the property. Uh, we are, we are putting in, uh, some, um, uh, four-foot-deep trench, uh, with plastic in it to prevent the migration of the bamboo from this one area. But there's a big bamboo curtain right here.
Uh, we're familiar with it.
Yeah. On, on each side of the driveway itself, uh, there's a buffer. Uh, I think it's for Scythia is right here on the property. And here are some, uh, localized trees. Uh, we were going to put some bushes along this area, you know, just subtle to break up some of the, the, of the plane here. But what's most important is we're putting these big trees in along here. Uh, it's a buffer of, uh, varieties, uh, and that will be limiting the view of the house from the street. Uh, and that's why we're putting them in this location. Here, we're keeping all the trees intact. Uh, we're not removing these trees, so there'll be a big, uh, natural buffer in this one area as well.
We're not seeing your cursor. You're obviously pointing things out that we're not seeing here on our screen, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So there is, there's a natural buffer, uh, to the north of the house. We're not clearing, we're only clearing specifically around the house itself and keeping the natural wooded area intact. And we're also putting a very, uh, heavy, uh, buffer along the roadway itself of arbivites, uh, to provide the, uh, a, uh, a year-round buffer in that location as well.
Arbivites.
Yes.
If you're a love.
Yeah, I know. Uh, I've been pretty successful with them lately, though. We, we spray the bottoms of them. Uh, we're looking at more of a, uh, architecturally a conical shape. Um, I, I, um, we, we don't want to, our providers, they keep pretty thick down toward the ground and will protect them from grazing with, uh, certain sprays. Uh, but we're trying to stay away from white pines and all those various spruce, uh, derivatives, which get very tall, but don't provide anything around the, around the bases. Uh, we, we want something to be starting from the ground and working up. And that's what, that's what we have with these type of pines.
Well, I, I think there is a species of arbivite that is less attractive to deer.
We have that on our west.
Green Giant, I think it is.
Green Giant. And the other thing, Peter, I know we talked about this before, but you're going to have to show the number of arbivites along there, not just the five, you know, uber-large ones. You're going to have to show, you know, a more reasonable thing that can be enforced since it's part of the site plan.
Number and spacing, I think we mentioned, right?
Yeah, the twelve-foot spacings we have, we, we have them on the, um, uh, on the drawings. We'll confirm that. Okay, very good.
I have, I have one last, um, thing to suggest to the board. Um, you may want to touch base with Dave Paganelly, the highway superintendent, and get his, uh, reading on the condition of Jerome Road. I had a conversation with him recently. He's in the process of rating all of the roads in your town. We talked specifically about Jerome. Um, and really, it's, uh, it's a substandard road with, with respect to how it was built. So it's, it's to look at it now after the winter that we just had. You'd think you'd be looking at the, the latest photographs from Mars.
Okay, well done. I see Jake Hopestein also has his hand up.
Good evening.
Hi, Jake.
Hey, Jake.
I just have, uh, quick, two quick questions. Question one, or actually three questions. The length of time the logging is going to go on, respectively, the length of time of construction and the traffic plan, because that road is not wide enough to, to stage trucks and construction equipment or employees working on the site to do the construction. Thank you.
Uh, answer very quickly, uh, to meet the requirements of the, um, DEC in regards to bats. Uh, we, we have to go in there and drop the trees on the ground, but not harvest them. Uh, because, uh, we don't want to be working, uh, in mud and snow. So, uh, prior to April 1st, the intent is, and we've done it in a lot of other projects lately, uh, we, we, we drop all the trees in a very organized manner. Uh, and then, uh, what we do is, um, uh, when the soils and the snow melts possibly, uh, in April, uh, we would use, uh, a, uh, special machines to lift all the trees up. And we process them by, uh, pushing the entire trees through chippers. Uh, it's a, um, we use a thirty-six-inch diameter chipper. So we move very, it can be moved very quickly and, uh, and so shipping, uh, takes about three days. Uh, and then we're done with that part of the project. The construction of itself, we, we have a very complicated DEP plan approved by DEP where we everything staged and phased and inspected throughout the process. Uh, but, uh, the intent, uh, is a DEP wants me to basically, uh, clear the site, uh, get the driveways in, the house site in, stabilize everything. They come and inspect it, uh, and then we'd be able to start the house itself. Uh, and, uh, we leave the, uh, the basin, uh, on the lower, uh, right-hand corner, uh, of our property to the end of the project, so it doesn't get contaminated. And we leave the septic system to the end of the project as well. So what takes place is once the site's cleared, stabilized, uh, with some, uh, item four in the driveway, we start building the house, the house we anticipate, uh, to, to take about six to eight months. And a lot of that is controls and, uh, and the electrical components, uh, once the shell is built. So once all that's done, uh, and the site stabilized, our last phase of the project uh, would be the septic system and the infiltration structure. Uh, and so that's, it's, it's sort of, it's spread out, uh, but it's very, it's in a very controlled environment.
Mr. Farn, if I may?
Please.
You, you, you're talking about taking down, I think you said a hundred and eighty trees.
Yes.
That's a lot of trees to, to chip and move. The chipper is going to be on, uh, going to be on Jerome Road?
No, uh, the chipper's on tracks and it drives around on the site. Uh, it has, um, it has, uh, uh, caterpillar tracks on all sides and it, it, it drives itself. Uh, so it, uh, it, it would, it would drive around the site. And basically the machines only lift the, the wood like ten to fifteen feet as they feed it into the, into the, uh, into, into the chipper itself.
And what's happening to what comes out of the chipper?
What we do is, uh, we make a big pile of chips, uh, and we use them as a stormwater management, uh, control and stabilization component during the construction of the site. Uh, and at the end of the project, uh, whatever remnants are left, uh, we will remove them off the site uh, in a, um, a dumpster.
And you didn't answer the traffic control question about employee parking or construction worker parking and the trucks.
Yeah, so what we do is, uh, we have a, uh, a, uh, staging area, which was approved by DEP, uh, and that's right here. Uh, and that has enough capacity to handle any trucks that arrive, uh, and plus, and plus anyone working on the job site. It's a very large.
We're not seeing where you're pointing. This is a critical question for us, so if you could explain.
Not to interrupt, but if you could just, I agree with, with Miss Schroder, but we gotta, one at a time, please.
Yeah, all right. I just hope we can't see what he's talking about.
No, I understand. Thank you.
So, so where, where the house is located, uh, there is a big courtyard area, uh, which measures like sixty feet by thirty feet. Uh, and we, we, and the people working on the house and the vehicles would be parked there. Uh, we would be more than happy to restrict, uh, and, and prevent any parking on Jerome. We'd look at that as a condition, uh, because that's, we follow that rule anyway with all the projects we work on. Uh, and, and we would, we would have no one parking on Jerome, period. Uh, and if that answers your questions on, on the Jerome impacts.
Anything else in the public?
Okay, I have a question, Rich.
Please.
Uh, Peter, could you just go through quickly your, what you're doing with stormwater here? I, I mean, I see you have some, uh, swales and so forth and looks like a basin down there.
So here, here's, uh, when, when the Stammer subdivision was approved, uh, they had a, a really complicated stormwater management, uh, project, uh, for the, for the site, for the site and all the lots itself. And so we were, we were, uh, burdened with meeting and, and following that procedure uh, with the subdivision based upon the DEP input. So the, the, the system uses all the same swales and piping and catch basins, which were with the original subdivision, except that our, our building is bigger because the original subdivision was approved with a fifteen-hundred-square-foot footprint and our footprint is larger. So accordingly, uh, we, uh, have all, we have an infiltration basin at the bottom of the hill. Uh, my client owns the, the property below this, uh, and we did that just to protect, uh, our, um, our work on this particular site. Uh, and, uh, and all the swales basically pick up all the water coming down the top of this hill uh, from the neighboring property, uh, which is referred to as lot number one in the subdivision. And we collect all their water, we collect our water. The swales diverted to all these little square boxes on my site plan I have before you, which are, uh, yard drains. And some of the water, uh, per the approved subdivision goes through the project and discharges down the hill. But all these catch basins, actually yard drains scattered across along the roadway itself, pick up all the water and goes through a big swale, uh, down to this infiltration structure here. Uh, and again, it's exactly, uh, per the approved subdivision. The other item, uh, we did is we had to get a Westridge County Health Department approval, uh, for this particular property. Uh, and the septic system became slightly larger than was proposed in the subdivision, uh, because we had to meet the health department required, requirements based on the perk rate and the size of the system. So our septic system is slightly larger than was shown on the, on the subdivision just to comply with the regulations of the health department. Again, we're fully approved by that agency. Uh, and then, uh, on the project itself, this, this would remain, uh, at this point in time as a wooded lot, but there is an intent, uh, in the future to, to, uh, once this is all stabilized and finished, uh, we will be, uh, applying for a standard house, a project, uh, below the property itself at some future date. Is that good?
Yeah, and, and so, uh, the operative question is that the stormwater scheme here is substantially in, comports with the approval, right?
That's correct. It had, it had to be to the point where they were looking at every single swale and the numbering had to match the other numbering.
Great. Thank you.
No problem.
See, uh, we got another hand being raised. Is Patricia Sullivan, uh, Rothberg?
Yes, I just wanted to say I, um, I.
Yes, I just wanted to say I um, I think he's uh, brought some wonderful plans and I'm very glad that Tesla has chosen the site here. I know there's some concerns and issues people are raising. But I think it's a wonderful opportunity. Uh, and a, and a move to the future for um, green planning. I know you'd mentioned there was a house done like this similarly in Long Island. And has there been any feedback? Is that built out and are they happy with how it's landed?
Actually, if I may, um. That's number two. This is number one. We're still getting that one together at this point in time.
Okay.
They're, they're all being released. Uh, and this is the first. Uh, the next one will be in Long Island and there's one in Connecticut. Uh, and one in New Jersey. Uh, we're not involved with the one in New Jersey, but we're looking at the one in Connecticut and Long Island.
Well, I want to thank you for coming to Yorktown. I appreciate all the questions people are asking and the concern about commercial in a residential area. Although this sounds like a very small amount of intrusion. And the plans are absolutely stunning, so thank you for, for picking Yorktown.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else from the public? Any further questions from the board? John, anything else from your end? John Tegger?
No, we have nothing else.
Jim, anything on your end? We missing anything?
Nothing on my end.
Okay, so the, to the members of the board, we have to put together a uh. A list for the ZBA. Anybody want to kick that off?
Let's let Aaron kick off uh. First with the traffic, right? Is that okay, Aaron?
Yeah, the traffic is is important, the uh. The number of trips that are coming in, the number of people that are going to be coming in, I think. We should, we should be negotiating some sort of a limit. Or at least a recommendation, maybe it's within the purview of the zoning board to do, that they should, they should do that.
Right.
So I would lead off with that as our first comment.
I, I, I struggle with that a little bit. Because it's, it's like telling the music teacher that they can only have five students a day. I, I think what we're hearing here is a fairly responsible corporate citizen who is, you know, as, as the woman pointed, has selected Yorktown for. This uh, kind of state-of-the-art, future uh, home package. Uh, it's not like they're arriving in helicopters, right? We've, we've had issues with helicopters in the past, but. I, I, I think we should be, we want liberal, I don't know if we ever suggested, uh, you know, limiting the traffic, they can go in and out of the particular store. Well, it just concerns me a little bit that we, you know, we're limiting their capability.
I absolutely would be against uh, limiting any, any visitors of, it's a, it's a man's house. So what does, well, this is want to come over and whatever. Somebody comes to my house sometimes on a Sunday, I got five, six cars in the driveway. You can't limit somebody who's living there. I, I don't, I don't see that as a problem.
I don't know how we, if you could delineate between the two, that's a good point, you know, if, if the resident has a cock, has a. A holiday party or something like that, it just would seem to be.
And they'll probably be driving Teslas, which don't make any noise.
That is true.
We haven't, look, this, the applicant is basically stating that it's going on the commercial side only. I'm talking about the commercial side. If the applicant is saying there's going to be some limit. We recommend that the zoning board includes that limit that the applicant is proposing on the commercial side of this application. When, when they decide whether to grant the permit. That there is a concern I have, if this was on two oh two, I wouldn't have the same concern. But this is, this is a very small. You know, localized neighborhood that I think we should have some concern on.
By, by the way, their discussion, I believe, will be strictly pursuant to the. Draw of the professional office in terms of traffic, it will not be relative to um, you know, personal visit, visitation.
Just a question for the applicant, uh, what is a square footage of the office on the plans? Uh, I believe it's around twelve hundred square feet. It's less than, it, we're less than all the, the thresholds for a home office versus the size of the house. So it's a relatively small space per se, it's fairly open, so it's not like.
Yeah, I mean, if the, if the applicant is. Uh, willing to do that, I, I think that would be a great gesture to the neighbors, right? That they're not going to overrun the neighborhood with traffic and. Again, there wouldn't be anybody parking on the street. I, I think that's a great gesture. I just don't think it's our role to limit the uh, opportunity for.
I mean, I, I could float a number right now if you'd like, I mean, something like ten trips a day for commercial. Or for people looking at the house, that would be. You know, a couple of people in one day, multiple cars, you know, we could do something like that, if that's, if that's what we're talking about.
Well, I think this is our, our suggestion to the zoning boards, and I think it's ultimately, I think with them, I, I'm okay with, you know, floating it to the zoning board and making it their. Their issue, I just think it's a slippery slope, that's it.
Does the current code in any way regulate, John, how many? How many uh? For the intensity of home office?
The, the existing regulation for home office does, yes.
And what does that exactly say, if you could?
I, I don't have that committed to memory.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can bring it up, I can bring it up in the, in a short couple of seconds if you want to talk about something else for a minute.
All right, so.
The restriction, well, they, you have to have parking and everything else as well, right, John?
Yes.
Number of trips, number of parking spaces, et cetera, and I think, you know, the applicant's well aware of that, and maybe we just uh. Make a generic uh, comment to the zoning board that they please consider. The impact on the neighborhood with the substandard roads. Uh, in regard to the number of trips and leave it up to them, it's within their purview anyway.
Yeah, I, I would be comfortable in, in, in us raising the issue and letting the zoning board address the specifics. It's, you're right, John, it's in their purview to deal with.
And I'd rather not have the applicant making representations to us on the number of trips and that kind of thing, that's, you know.
Yeah.
That's up to them and and Peter, it might give you a little time to speak with your client and really. Get a good grasp on that. You know, if in fact, you know, um, you don't. Have that yet because this is the first. Uh, residential home project, as you say, as you point out, so. But, you know, if, if the. You know, the planning department wants to make note of uh, whatever the code is, I'm sure the zoning board is well aware of the code as well, but.
So I can read some things, Steve, if you'd like.
Great.
Thank you.
Uh, it's, I'm got, there's a list here in the, in the regulation, which is by the way, three hundred dash seventy-six. Uh, which i- it says that it's for the sole use of the owner occupant. Or his immediate family, no more than twenty-five percent of the usable floor area of the main building shall be devoted to it. No more than three persons, including but not limited to partners, associates, employees, et cetera, et cetera. May be engaged in the operation of such use. They need to submit a parking plan with their application, they need to do sufficient landscaping, buffering. Uh, and it says that. The zoning board must consider the overload impact of the use on the residential characteristics of the neighborhood. And it may limit the intensity of the use of the professional office. By restricting the hours of operation, days, numbers of visits, et cetera, et cetera.
There you go.
And then it does say that. There should be no more than sixteen vehicular business trips per day. So those are the major um. Sections, the major requirements.
That would be our, or their guide then.
That's their, that's their guy now. I mean, Peter, do you have, do you uh, need variance from any of those?
No, I, I don't anticipate more than sixteen trips a day.
Okay.
We, we could definitely live with that ordinance.
There you go.
Okay, what other uh, comments do we have for the ZBA? We'll talk about the roadway with, with uh. The highway superintendent, Dave, or has he been forwarded this already? It sounds like they're, they're doing a. A study of all the roads in town, I'm sure that'll come up.
I have a question for Peter.
Yes.
Peter, Peter, would, would it help you to get a. A permit to the trees first, uh, so you can circumvent uh, going to road boards and stuff? Can, can we do something like that for you?
Uh, it would be appreciated, I'm, I'm pushing up against a deadline, that's my problem.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I realize that, and that's why, you know, to further the project, maybe we could help you. John, can we do that for him?
Uh, I'm sorry, Willie, I was reading something, can you repeat that?
He's, he's under a deadline for the trees, of course, he wants to save, you know, the government wants to save the bats and all that stuff. So if we can help him out and give him a permit just to do the trees before April. I think that would help him out. I don't know if we could do that, but certainly he's up against a, a wall.
So you have to do them, you have to do the actual removal by, in April, is that what you're saying?
You have to drop the trees in uh, before April first.
Before April.
They can lay on the ground after that, but as long as the trees are cut down, that meets the criteria of the DEC.
Can you just explain that again, I, why there is such a deadline?
Yeah, I can go into it. Uh, the, the DEC passed an ordinance that uh, a while ago to save endangered species consisting of the brown-eared and the brown and the long-eared bat. The bats hibernate in caves during the winter time, and so they're, uh, they're dormant. Uh, and 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 their habitat is, at that point in time, is the cave. But in the springtime, all the way up to October. Uh, they basically are frolicking around and they live in the trees. At nighttime, they crawl up underneath uh, the bark of certain types of trees, like a hickory. Uh, and anything with, with a large uh, protruding bark. Uh, and so they live there, uh, and um. Uh, during those, at nighttime, and so you can't cut the trees down because if a tree falls. Uh, while they're living there, you're going to basically uh, hurt a bat. So they pass an ordinance pretty much through Westchester, uh, Putnam County, some parts of Connecticut. Where you can't cut the trees in that certain period of time. Uh, the only time you can cut trees now is October to um, uh, March thirty-first. There's actually an ordinance was passed for that.
And it's countywide? That's Westchester countywide?
Oh yeah, everywhere, yep.
This came up with the Lowe's application, well, it was the former Costco, but I remember the, discussing the same thing, you know. It basically, you, you want that section, that area. To not provide habitat before they get there.
I get it. So are we in a position to evaluate the merits of this removal of a hundred and eighty trees? I don't recall whether we got a, or do we, or are we beyond that analysis?
I think John says it's got to go through the, the tree board.
Okay.
Are you the last word, or is the tree, the tree board, could they, could you have a recommendation or follow their, their approval and and make a. A, a, a condition or a resolution conditional upon them approving the tree plan? Is that possible? And save, is save any return coming back to your, to your board?
Why not? Why can't we do that? Because.
Jim, any thoughts on that, or John?
Well, I think we'd have to have a negative declaration first. So we, we would at least have to do that much before we could authorize the tree removal.
Well, Peter, if you, if you had a uh. Permit approved at the next meeting. That gives you the three weeks to get that down, and it takes you three days, you said, to drop the trees, right?
That's correct, yes.
Is that, can you work with that?
Yeah, I mean, in the next meeting, I, what I would do is after I'm getting off the, off this meeting, I'm going to make sure we get everything before the tree board. Uh, and then uh, what we would do is um. Uh, the next meeting would be what date? Uh, when, when's the next date of your uh, board meeting?
March.
March eighth.
Yeah, not next, yeah, eight, March eighth.
Yeah, we could, we, we, we could, if we got an approval on March eighth, we could move forward. If every other agency's approved us to drop the trees.
Right, but we, we have a tree ordinance that requires mitigation and so forth, so the tree commission needs to chime in on that. And then this board, this board does the approval.
Okay, very good. We'll take care of that right away. Again, we're following the subdivision. The subdivision had all the same amount of trees except for uh, a minor component. So we'll, we'll give both plans to the tree board, what was approved in subdivision. And what we have right now with the limited disturbance, and you can actually see where the trees are. And we filed with you that drawing, you have that in your possession, SY four was filed as part of this application.
And, and that has uh, mitigation measures outlined on it, or?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Good, okay, good.
Okay.
We will send it them tomorrow.
Right. All right, anything else for the ZBA?
So, so you want to talk a little bit about the traffic, right? That you're concerned about how its impact on the neighborhood, although they have. It appears as though the applicant can meet the restrictions in the existing code in terms of the sixteen trips. But nevertheless, you want to convey that to the ZBA, is that correct?
I think yes.
Yeah, that we, that they be sensitive to that and just leave it to them.
Got it.
And, and speak, I think.
The existing neighborhood.
Right, and address our, our thumbs up on the solar roof system. Just so we're specific with them. And well, that's actually us, that doesn't even go to them, right?
Right, no, that's you.
Got it.
So was there any, anything else other than the traffic issue?
I don't think so, no?
Um, I, I think I'll suggest to you to mention the, because it does say in the, in the. Uh, in the regulation about buffering, so I would like to mention uh, the buffering that he's showing in terms that are providing. Which really will be covered by you, I think, but should be covered by them, I think, as well.
Very good, that's fine.
Right, and also the tree board, I'm sure is going to have as mitigation.
Yes.
That's something that we'll have to work out.
Right.
Okay. We missing anything? All right, all that being said, do I have a motion to, do we want to leave it open for written comment for a period, or?
I think we should leave it open until the next time, just so that we can get the tree information in, and if there's any further comments on that, we'll be, we'll have a complete record.
All right, so we'll close and leave it open for public comment for ten days?
No, I would just adjourn it to the eighth.
You want to adjourn it, okay.
I move that we adjourn the public hearing at this point and not close it.
Do I have a second?
I think we leave it for written comment. Ten day.
I agree.
It's all sewn up before our next meeting, we'll have all the comments.
Does that mean we don't address the solar power, the resolution specifically?
That's what I'm saying, we, you have to get, you know, if we close it now, we can address the solar.
Yeah.
John, any thoughts? John Tegger?
Uh, well, for next meeting, we're going to have uh, the draft resolution for the solar and the amended site plan. Uh, so um. I think that is up to you guys in terms of your own. Uh, willingness to field comments. On the night that you would be anticipating having a vote, so that's up to you.
I, I'd rather have them before us, before the meeting.
Right.
So if some people want to write.
I gotta do it, John.
Even if we read them at the meeting, uh, as we've done in the past, uh. Well, we don't even have to do that, as long as we have them in our packets.
Yeah, normally we close intent, for comments intended days anyhow.
Yeah, but you normally you do that when the record is complete and all the environmental, you know, reviews are done. We have a significant piece open in, in terms of the tree commission at this point. That's all I'm concerned about.
How does that work, John Tegger? Would this was an approved subdivision with all these areas being cleared already, correct?
Yes.
With a couple of exceptions.
Yeah, in the subdivision, uh. Yeah, and the subdivision, uh, did not have mitigation pursuant to this law, I believe, Robin, right? I don't think so. You, you're muted, Robin.
I don't think so.
Yeah, so my point is, is that the, the, um, this predates the latest iteration of the tree law. And so there are mitigation measures that need to be taken under that law, and, uh, the tree commission gets a crack at commenting on that.
Is there any, um, precedent as of right because they had the approved subdivision, or is this?
You know, they're subject to the law since they are, uh, in other words, put it this way, if they went and got a building permit and were not changing the, uh, subdivision, you know, the layout, if it was a fifteen hundred square foot uh, house that they were putting up in the same position and so forth, when they got, went to get their building permit, they should uh, need to get a tree permit because there is none on, on record for it, and they would be caught uh, in that law in terms of doing the mitigation for that number of trees anyway. They're adding, they're adding some additional trees here and they're moving things around slightly. So it does obviously get caught, would get caught anyway, I believe, there's no grand, no grandfathering.
Let me propose a compromise then, supposing we were to close that portion of the public hearing as relates to the, the site plan and the solar energy portion of this, leave the tree permit piece open because that's really all we're dealing with, and then they, we can be prepared to go forward on all of it in two weeks.
That works for me because it gives the applicant, you know, the, the thumbs up and, and they can have a decision to move forward since they know our opinion formally about the solar system.
So how would you want to do that, Aaron?
I would move that we, we close the public hearing on all of the applications except that relating to the tree permit. We adjourn the tree permit piece of this for two weeks and, and hopefully everything will come together at that point on March eighth.
The original subdivision did have a tree permit. It was not subject probably to the same law because it was twenty eighteen.
Right.
But we're being told that they're subject to the new law, that's.
Right.
Yes.
With that permit expired, right, I mean, there's a, there is an expiration on that permit?
Well, you're altering.
There, there's a new law that comes into effect, so I mean, now mitigation is required, the law didn't let any existing permits or existing projects off the hook in terms of grandfathering, so not to mention the fact that not only that, you do have a different set of parameters here, because I think that they are, they have expanded their limit of disturbance and are taking down a number of additional trees, so, I mean.
Thus the word amended in amended site plan.
Right, and so, you know, here, here's the best case scenario, you may see, for instance, if, if the law was lenient and spoke about, you may see them getting a mitigation plan and a permit for the removal of the forty trees. But they're still, so i- in terms of the the review and what the action is, the fact that they're taking down a hundred and eighty, it, it's, it's still the same process that they have to go through, so. That's my, that's my view on it.
All right, so any objection to Aaron's compromise of closing the public hearing with the exception of the tree portion of the application?
I think that's a good solution.
What, um, let me just ask a question, Aaron, what, what would you expect would come up if we do, if we did close it, period? We would still have to come to an agreement about, you know, taking into account the tree commission's comments, et cetera, and the mitigation plan, we would still make anything subject to our agreement on that plan, right, we're not deciding on a plan tonight either way. We still have control over the conversation.
Yeah, I agree, but I just don't want, you know, if there's no public comment on the tree portion of this on March eighth, fine, we, we, we make our decision. If there is, we take that comments and those comments into consideration as we finalize, you know, our approval on this, that's all. I just want to make sure that there's room for the public to have some input on the tree portion of this.
And you don't think that a ten day period for written comment is adequate?
I normally would, except there's nothing to comment on yet. Necessarily, the, the, the tree commission's comments haven't come to us. The mitigation plan has to go through that process, that, that's all I'm looking for. I don't think it's going to hamper the, the approval process, I think it'll, you know, on March eighth, I think it'll strengthen what we're trying to do.
Can we ask the applicant for some input?
Well, we, we'd like to get to the tree commission as soon as possible. Is Robin, does Robin refer to them, or do I go directly? Robin's muted.
We'll send it to them. We email it to them, yeah, so he'll have it tomorrow.
Okay. And, and, and in regards to the mitigation, because, because we, we read the resolution as well, and we saw it had a tree permit, but we have no problem amending a submission, uh, to include, uh, trees, so, uh, we'd like to basically augment that uh, if possible, uh, to get before the commission with, with some mitigation. But one thing is, um, the, the, the tree planting would be a buffer around the perimeter because, um, we have a solar house and solar houses don't do well with trees right around them. We need sunlight to reach the roof. So, uh, basically, uh, we'd be more than happy to put trees on the north side of the projects where our neighbors are, uh, and we'd be willing to put trees on the east side in some manner. Uh, but to the south and to the west, um, in this business, the more open it is, the better is for us. And so that would be, uh, uh, one of the issues, we do have the property next door. Uh, but we don't want to restrict it in, in, in any manner, uh, but if we could, that's kind of the concept I see before us to, to move this forward, this project.
Yeah, kind of, you see, how do we get to this point that the tree commission hasn't seen this and commented? I mean, how do we get to a public hearing before the tree commission sees something?
That is probably a breakdown on our part. And, uh, I would think that it came into being probably because, uh, it had a tree permit already. Uh, but further discussion on it brings it to light that it needs to have a look by them and, uh, needs a fair mitigation plan.
And, and I think to, to John's point, this is the, this is the process, this is why these, uh, these hearings uh, and the various boards are in place. This is exactly what, the way that the process is supposed to work. Unfortunately, we have a, it sounds like a, a deadline that's been put in place for the entirety of the county.
Well, that's, I don't know, that's, that's not true, they have a, there is a mapped portion.
Is there an area?
Right, Peter, there, there's a map, right, for these various areas of Westchester, Putnam, and part of Fairfield. You know, it is mapped out by the DEC, um, and they are sensitive to the nesting periods, uh, or the roosting periods of the bat, so, um, you know, it's, it's not all of Westchester, not all of Yorktown for that matter.
Because that, that, that would, you know, be more concerning to me about any project that came to us if this is the case.
Right.
I, 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 I think the process is working. I think there's certainly some steps we have to take before we take our final action. It's just how we want to go about getting this information. So I, I think we've heard from Aaron that he wants to hold open at least the tree portion until the tree committee could review this, come up with some kind of mitigation. And I think, uh, Mr. Scott has different ways to obtain mitigation or the, the method of mitigation. So that's something that that board will look at. Honestly, I have no problem holding it up for ten days, I also don't have a problem as I'm sure Mr. Scott wouldn't withhold it open the tree portion until he gets some clarity of which way he's going.
Yes.
So I, I think either way, we're going to get to where we need. I think it's probably cleaner if we held open the tree portion uh, un- until we, till we meet next. This way it doesn't look like we're circumventing anybody.
So why don't we recognize Aaron's motion that the, let's just break it into the two sections on our agenda here. Uh, Aaron, and, and you can jump in and correct me, but we'll hold open the public hearing on the amended site plan in relation to the tree work, you know, in, in relation to, yeah, the tree removal and mitigation plan. And, and then I guess we'll have a second motion to close the public hearing on the special use permit for the large-scale solar system, is that what we're after?
Yes.
Okay.
Any issues with that, Jim or John?
No. Real quickly, is there also the, the zoning board might come back with, aren't we also kind of referring a couple of aspects to this or passing comment to the zoning board, was there anything coming back from the zoning board that we would have to take into consideration?
Not on the, not on the specific actions in front of you.
Okay.
Just on their, their professional office.
Yeah, if they don't get that, then then it gets, well, it gets kicked back to us anyway, we don't go forward unless they, they approve that.
Any issues, Jim?
No.
Okay, so in reference to the summer subdivision lot two.
I'm going to second Aaron's motion then, all right, Rich, just do you have any on record?
All right, so for the public hearing amended site plan, we're going to leave the tree portion open as per, uh, Aaron Bach, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. LaScala.
There you go. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, all right, and in reference to the special use permit for a large-scale solar system, do I have a motion to close that portion of the meeting?
I'll move.
Second.
All's in favor.
All right.
All right. All right, Mr. Scott, good luck to you with the ZVA and the tree board.
The only thing, only comment I have to make is, um, uh, we need a coordinated review through SECA. Uh, and I guess you're the lead agent, uh, for the project. I don't think, uh, the ZVA can make a decision without a SECA determination, is that correct?
Uh, they, the way in, in terms of variances in front of the zoning board, it's always kind of, uh, uncoordinated re- review, actually, and they, they act as their own secret, uh, agent, uh, lead agent.
Very good, okay, that's fine, thank you.
All right, sir.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much, good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the special session portion of the meeting and move it to the work session?
I'll move.
All's in favor.
All right.
Hi.